As the guiding principle of my official acts, and as I had the pathways of local legislation, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart, and shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Thank you, please be seated. Requesting our Madam Secretary to please call the room.
Okay, good morning to each and everyone, and welcome to the 76th Regular Session, and Happy New Year to all. Present for today's Regular Session, Mr. Chair, the following: The Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Oligario, Honorable Farida Dangpalan, Honorable Catherine Toralba, Honorable Serabin Ramos, we have Honorable Drexemil Palalon, and Honorable Al-Hapid Muhammad. Andre Kudarar, six sir, out of eleven, and we are in room.
Considering that there are six members present, the Chair would like to declare that there is a call room. Uh, Mr. Floor Leader, for the adoption of the order of business.
Mr. Chair, at this juncture, may I move for adoption of the order of business for today's Regular Session?
There's a motion for adoption of the order of business. Julie's agenda by the Honorable Al-Hapid Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Having none, the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, we are now on the visitors' hour. I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors.
Rule suspended. But before that, uh, the Honorable Floor Leader, do you have now the presence of our newly-elected Ligan ng mga Barangay President?
Mr. Chair, may we acknowledge our new Ligan ng mga Barangay President, the person of the Honorable Roy Andy C. Oligario?
You're now recognized. Kindly take that seat, Honorable Roy Oligario. Welcome to the 12th Legislative Council of this Municipality of Epe, and congratulations. Considering that the rules are still suspended, Madam Secretary, I'd like to give the floor to you for the proper turnover.
Okay, so today we already have some by the way of this for the decision of the former Vice Mayor, I'd like to, uh, the former Vice President, the, uh, Emil.
Plaque, plaque, plaque of recognition, come on.
Plaque of recognition, which is a very simple token from the Sangguyan, given and awarded to Emil Chanti Oligario Capirig, Ligan ng mga Barangay President, from September 5, 2018, to November fifteenth, twenty, uh, November 15, 2023. In grateful recognition and appreciation of her enduring efforts, faithful commitment, and outstanding performance, and vital contribution to this legislative body in terms of legislation as the Ligan ng mga Barangay President, given this 22nd day of November, 2023, signed, Estetegia Sangguyan Secretary and Ramses Oligario Municipal Vice Mayor. After the picture, I would like to request, Ma'am Chanti Oligario, for the turnover.
Before the turnover, uh, Mr. Chair, we will hear first, uh, a parting message from our former ABC President, the Honorable Chanti Oligario Capirig. And we would like also to acknowledge, Mr. Chair, the presence of our very own Municipal Mayor, the Honorable Anomelsey Oligario.
Good morning.
Good morning to each one. Today, as I accept this plaque of recognition for my five-year stint in this chamber, I can't help but remember who were those people who played important roles in giving me this opportunity to make an impact in the Municipality of Epe. Of course, to our very own Mayor, Mayor Inday Ami Oligario, who opened this door for me, along with Attorney General Churchill, who then convinced my husband to let me run for public office, who can say no to family. Even if it means his yes and mine significantly change the time and resources that I offered to our businesses and to my kids, who have been sidelined many times because of duty calls. Thank you, Joey, Jaycee, Ami, Otoy, and the rest of the rancher staff. Tokon Zino Tugot and the rest of Team Action Solusyon for believing that I can lead lower tawag to greater heights, sacrificing their respective interests for the benefit of the constituents. To the 27 barangay captains for the 100% support, since they were led by me, a newfound politician, I have all those initiatives, programs implemented because you have embraced my kind of leadership. To all SK Chair, who had accepted all the challenges that being thrown to them and making all those programs, programs for youth possible and successful, indeed, who made a mark that if an activity is participated by 1028 barangays, no question, an overwhelming success. To all the department heads of this LGU, thank you for your patience and knowledge you have shared with me. I become effective legislator because you backed me up, ordinances that surely had changed the lives of our volunteers. Special mention to our Municipal Administrator, the stress that I brought upon him, especially during budget preparation. I can still clearly recall Mayor Ami when I insisted on the budget for this legislative paperless session. I hatapag na tanan kay Honorable Capirig, kay dili tamahuman ani. Not only that situation, but all the time we debated about funds because I know during work he's not my brother, but the one that I should get a yes for the legislative budget measures and issues and concerns be given upon or acted upon. To complete it all, I hope, malimtan ninyo ang follow-up ang posesyon sa mag-maintain sa mga computers and hardwares. I have already got the yes of Mayor Ami, but I wasn't here already when the annual A-Budget 2024 was approved. Nabunutan na judog tunok si Admin. Dili na niya maingnan among friendly sister, buyabag, buyaga, bagod na ang imo magulang oy. Tubagun rapod niya, tubagun rapod siya ni Bembe mo, magulang pod na nimo. But that's how it is. Thank you, Sir Doddy. Thank you also to IPMR Gasal, IPMR Buhal, SK Fed Susi Garcia, then Cons Alcoriza, Cons Sabihon, Cons Inofario, Cons Largo, and then Vice Mayor Boardner, and to the rest of you. My journey, as they say, from the member of the silent committee to become what I've become to this chamber, holding important committees. Thank you for all the learnings. I know that five years were fruitful and that I leave a mark in this chamber. To all the legislative staffs, I hope I have extended help also to you. And lastly, to my staffs, Joan, Elvira, Yvonne, Paul, and Jonathan, who have thought nakaya na tu'n itanan. I can never imagine what we gone through, but through it all, you have never left me, and you keep fighting for me. So now, this is a very interesting situation, where it is perhaps poetic justice that an oligario turns over all responsibilities to an oligario. I know that my heart was born of Papa's heart, unwilling at first, but fully committed later. Maybe the winds of political favor are on hold for me at the moment, like a gathering of strength for what it is yet to be. But for today, I turn over the responsibility of an ABC President to someone I truly trust, to be a father and guide to other barangay captains. Pang, indeed, God has better plans for us, and I'm so amazed of all the events unfolding right in front of me. God gifted me the rest I deserved, and for you, the chance to make us legacy as one of the son of Mayor Andres Oligario. You and Mamang Aviz have sacrificed a lot for us. Ma'oh, Rajod, na ginain ng unimo sa amua magiksuan, magtarong mo iskuwela kay wala me kabilin sa iniwa. All your hard work paid off. We are ready to face the world with or without politics. Now, let us be that wings for you. Bembe, Doddy, Longlong, and for me, for you to soar high. This is your time to claim. Claim it because you are an oligario. The battle may have been lost for me, but the war ain't over yet. The best is yet to come. All I can say is thank you, Lord, and thank you all.
May I'm buntag ka natuntanan? Uh, dagang salamat sa inyong minuteong pag-abi-abi ka na. Sa mahimong ako makauban sa pagpanday o mga balao para sa atong, para sa kalambuan sa atong pinalanggang municipyo sa Epe. Uh, gipasali na ko kanin yong tanan nga isip, representante sa 28 kaparangay. Akong buhaton ang akong mga responsibilidad nga mahimong tinutan ay na tingog sa barangay. Pinagibot sa inyong pagyakan ako nga isip, expensive moso pamalao. Daku pukay akong pasalamat sa akong iksuan nga si Mayor Inday Ami. Ngamoy, nga seyahang pagplastalkan ako aning depita. Ngasa akong pengidaron karoon na hatag puning na klaseng oportunidad ka na. Sakinsik ka mga barangay kapitan nga mi barong ka na ko o ngidoyog, ngamoy naghatag ukos ka na ko nga mahatag ning bagong chapter sa akong kinabuhay. Ngamoy ng kamot ko nga dili tabo pakiason sa inyong pagsali ka na ko. Sa akong mga anak, nga ngayong taon na ring kamot po sa ilahang nagka, dinaiyang responsibilidad ng atong municipyo. Sa pagbotang na ko aning depita, dili pajod uli ang tanan. Kiling tanan para sa inyo dagang salamat.
Thank you. Honorable Roy Andy Kamacho Oligario.
Mr. Chair, may I move for a five-minute recess?
Resess for five minutes. Do we have any visitors for this morning?
We have here another visitor in person of Jennifer Toledo.
Uh, Ms. Toledo, you're not recognized?
Hello, mayang buntag sa tanan. Labin agad sa laba na tumakagahom o kamongan na adirin sa atubangan. Ah, mga yuko o tabang bi sa gamay lang kinasinkasing. nga akong apo na admit sa Sambuangga City kay na injury siya kay nabali iyang kamot na disgrasya atong 31. Dayon ang palituno niya na sting list sa Gawas gipapalit kay wala daw budget sa sulod. Tanang resita niya sa Gawas munang nihangi ako bi sa gamay lang para sa akong apo kay ang amahan o inahan ang nagatiman dito dayon akong pamilya di man makatabang sakwa. Mun ako nga niyo bi sa kinasinkasing gamay lang daw aton ako para sa akong apo dagang salamat.
It's a pleasure, everybody. Fastly, honorable Chair. Okay, requesting, uh, members of the staff to kindly collect. Okay, and we have...
We have here another visitor, Honorable Chair, in person of Bona P. Indo.
Ah, mayang buntag sa tanan di ako karondari o, ah, mga yuko tabang para sa akong bayaw. Nanginghanglan siya o welcher, monis siya. Si Bibing, kama. O more na ni akong tuyog dagang salamat.
Okay, um... Okay, well noted. Do we still have, uh, more visitors, Mr. Fur?
I think we are through with visitor hour, Honorable Chair.
Okay, may we proceed with the privilege hour?
We are non-privilege hour. If there anybody among the Honorable Chamber of this wishes to avail of the privilege, please raise your hand. Honorable, Honorable Farida. I move to recognize Honorable Farida, Honorable Chair.
Hello. Uh, I just would like to ask for your indulgence if I would like, I would be, um, just sitting down on my privilege uh, to our Honorable Ramses Oligario Presiding Officer, to all the members of the Legislative Council, our colleagues, to our SB Secretary, Mamalay Igia. The Secretariat, to all the staffs, visitors, Happy New Year, and good morning, everyone. Also, I would like to welcome our newly-elected Ligan ng Barangay President, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario. Welcome to the Sangguyang Bayan of Epe. I wish to convey my sincere and warmest greetings to all. A very happy and prosperous New Year ahead of us. I thank each and everyone for the good kamarevery and hoping for a more harmonious and productive council for 2024. 2023 was not seems to be a good year for me with so many crises that me and my family gone through. Alhamdulillah, I heard it all, praying that the days to come, with Allah's presence and guidance, this would be a good year, Insha Allah. Grateful to our Presiding Officer for heading this council in a fair and harmonious environment. Thank you, Honorable Rambo Oligario. I thank our SB Secretary and staff for a job well done for the past years. Again, mabuhay, SB Epe. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, I move that Honorable Ramos be recognized.
Honorable Ramos is recognized.
Honorable Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, your leader. My team colleagues, our visitors in the chamber. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Before anything else, I would like to welcome the barangay captain of barangay population, Honorable Roy Andre Oligario, who by virtue of his recent election as President of the Ligan ng mga Barangay becomes the newest member of the Sangguyang Bayan of Epe. Please accept my heartfelt, heartfelt congratulations again by welcome to you as one of the honorable members of this august body. My, my friends, I take pride of having been a member of the Sangguyang Bayan of Epe for over the past seven years because honestly, I felt so fulfilled modestly aside. In my heart, I know that I have done what were expected of me as a duly-elected representative of our people in the council. I am particularly proud being a member of this present council because last year, last year, our legislative department was awarded as the most outstanding Sangguyan in the whole province of Sambangis Bugay and in the entire western Medana region. It is therefore only proper and fitting that we thank the Lord, our God, for his constant guidance which made it possible for us to achieve such distinct accomplishments. Those only prove how we as a legislative body work so hard with utmost dedications and emotions towards our duties. Kudos to us all. The process we observe in crafting ordinances and resolutions and the quality of legislations we pass which benefited our constituents and community, community and as those accolades. Credits and commendations are likewise due to the people considered as the workforce in the legislative department. Therefore, I will be remiss in my obligations if Epe miss to thank and commend the Secretary of the Sangguyang Bayan, Mamalay Igia, and all our legislative staff who work so hard and always work this termile in preparing and completing all the necessary documentation of all the effort of the council in every council session. My sincere thanks to all of you for the good job. You all deserve our commendation. My distinguished colleagues, I know that our predecessors in this chamber were equally hardworking and dedicated that they also passed a lot of ordinances of great importance during their time. Some of these ordinances have been existing since the creations of our municipality. I wonder however, whether these ordinances are still applicable or even relevant in our present time? Nobody really knows. I am therefore compelled to strongly suggest to the committee concerned to conduct as soon as possible any inventory of all existing ordinances to determine whether some of these ordinances are already obsolete and no longer applicable and no longer relevant to our present time. Thereafter propose to the body actions to be taken on these identified ordinances and introduce the necessary amendments to these ordinances to make them responsive to the needs of our present time. Or if necessary, propose for the revocation of the best ordinance and introduce new measures and ordinances that are relevant and applicable in our condish- conditions ordinances that can stand the test of the time. Mister Chair, with due respect, this humble representation recommends that this matter of great importance be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Resolutions for their immediate appropriate actions with the considerations or the suggestions here in my visit. Thank you and Happy New Year, Happy New Year to all of us.
Thank you, Honorable Ramos. Is there anybody else who wishes to avail of privilege hour? Please raise your hand. Is there anybody else? Honorable Toralba, any privilege?
Okay, Mr. Flor, I think.
I think we are through with privilege, Honorable Chair.
We are through with the privilege hour. May we proceed, Mr. Flor, leader, with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the previous min- the minutes, the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there's a motion for, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Any second, third motion? Julie seconded by the honorable Dampalan. Discussion? Any objection? Having that, the motion is hereby approved. For the adoption.
Honorable Chair, Mr. Flor. I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there's a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Any second, third motion? Julie seconded by the honorable Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments, corrections? Objection? Hearing that, the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the reference of business.
Okay, for the reference of business calendar and first reading, and there are other communications. We have here under item A supplemental budget number one for CY 2023 of barangay Pangi and supplemental budget number two of Magdaob. Also number three of barangay Labi.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
Refer this matter to Committee on Appropriations. Next item.
Item B, we have your communication from Luz Yakuka requesting for a resolution to opposing no objection to the pre-patent application located at Puruk Orchids, Tion. This municipality containing an area of 8,151 square meters.
So it's a pleasure of the body.
Honorable Chair, I move that this resolution be referred to the Committee on Land Use.
Refer this matter to Committee on Land Use.
We are now on the committee report, sir.
For clarification, Mister Chair, this is not a resolution eh, this only communication, requesting for resolution.
Okay. Okay, we're now the committee report, Mr. Flor.
We are now on committee report. Is there anybody on this honorable chamber who has committee report? Please raise your hand. Chair, or shall I begin with Honorable Ramos? Any committee report? Honorable Noiga? Honorable Apid? Honorable Catalunya? Honorable Toralba? Honorable Dampalan? How about the, the SK Chairman? We are through with the committee report, Honorable Chair.
Okay, we're through with the committee reports. May, Mr. Flor, considering that there are no ah matters to be discussed in the colored of business, may we proceed with the other, with a period of other matters? Generalable Toralba or Generalable Palalan?
Hello. So we have a communication duly endorsed to the office of the Municipal Mayor from the Municipal Health Office. First, the memorandum of understanding MOU between the Zambuanga City Medical Center and Ipeel Municipal Health Unit for the implementation of Regional Telemedicine Program. Second, general guidelines on the retention and distribution of Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, PHIC professional fees as pooled funds in Ipeel Municipal Health Office for review.
Please, so what's the pleasure of the body? With regards to the ah communication coming from our local chief executive. Any comments coming from the committee chair on health?
I, good morning, Mister Chair. Ah unfortunately, there was no communication forwarded from, to me by the municipal health officer. So ah if the ah MOU will be referred to me, I will thoroughly study the ah mo- memorandum of unders- I, yeah, understand it. Thank you.
May I ask if the ah, any attachments have been attached on that communication?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Okay, um. And also may I ask if, is it an urgent matter? It is, is it urgent or there are urgent?
I move for the urgency of this matter and to be referred to the particular committee.
Okay, ah so yes, that this matter be.
Mister Chair, if I may, ah may I know when was this matter um brought up to our attention?
Um, today, Doc.
Okay, just this morn- just this morning. Okay, so may I request Generalable Palalan to kindly ah ah turn over the document to our committee chair on health? Ah, committee chair on health, the honorable Dala- ah Diane Catalunya. So, Mr. Flor, may we refer this matter to committee on health?
Okay, Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the committee on health.
There's a motion that this matter be referred to committee on health. Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Noiga. Any discussion, objection? Having that, the motion is hereby approved.
I move for a five-minute recess, Mister Chair.
Okay, recess for five minutes.